I'd like to open the meeting and call the public hearing to order, please. I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Pennella for her presentation.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. Tonight, we have a public hearing on the proposed capital improvement project. Just to go over some of the logistics here, we do have a vote scheduled for December 13th, a week from today, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Amherst Central High School South Gym, same place if you voted on our school budget, where we conduct the school budget vote. And the overview of the total proposed cost of the project is $68.7 million. As a means of process or agenda, I'll start with some introductions. We will go over the project relative to project development, the scope of the project, budget and financials, and then a potential schedule should the project pass. We will have an opportunity for questions. As a public hearing, this is one of the opportunities we have to engage with the public. So we will have the opportunities for questions. The only thing I ask is if you have a question that you make note of it, because there is a chance we might answer it during the presentation. In case we don't, then obviously we have an opportunity for questions following the presentation and/or comments. We did ask people to sign in if they wanted to, if they thought they may want to ask a question or thought that they may want to make a comment. So if you signed in, we have record of that. If you just arrived and didn't sign in, we still will take your question and I'm sure we'll be able to answer that infinitive. Oh, sure. So I will jump right in with introductions. As floor president Steinle mentioned, I'm the superintendent, Anthony Pennella, and I have a team with me tonight to help present the project. Behind you is our school business administrator, Laura Bezinski. She'll be covering the financials. And we also have our team from Young &amp; Right Architectural. So our partner that's on the project is Rashawn Sanubi. Another member from Young &amp; Right that is on the project is Patrick Nidzwicki. Carlo Zavatti is here from Turner Construction, who is our construction management company, and Mark Rampato is our director of facilities. So I've assembled this team, so hopefully any questions you have can be answered, because I'm a social studies teacher, and when it gets into the mechanics and the technical questions, I wanted to make sure we have all the experts here that could answer any of those questions that you may have. So I will give you the overview of the project. We put together a scope that has four main goals. As you saw, you know, the project is $68.7 million, which is a good project relative to accomplishing these goals. Our goals were to focus on health, safety, and welfare. More so now than ever, that's been thrust into the limelight of our thinking. Facilities, infrastructure improvements. So those are the things that you may not see, but that if they don't work, you know about it. You know, heating systems, mechanical systems, you know, those things that are sort of the backbone of our environments within our buildings. Site improvements, which include, you know, some athletic fields, apparent drop-offs, and other outdoor improvements, and then educational space improvements, which I think the best, the best piece of the scope in that category would be an addition at Windermere for our full-day pre-K program that has expanded. So I'll invite Rashawn Sanubi up to jump into the scope development and scope itself a little bit more. Welcome.
Thank you, Tony. As Tony mentioned, my name is Rashawn Sanubi. I'm a partner with Young &amp; Right Architectural. And again, I'm joined by Patrick Nidzwicki, who's our project architect on the project. So this process actually started well before COVID, with the district meeting with individual user groups at all of the different schools to determine the educational needs of all the students. Unfortunately, due to COVID, we had to pause the process, and then it sort of slowed down and picked back up once things started to open back up. Starting in late 2021, you know, the district called a meeting between their financial advisor, CMA, their capital planning committee, and their architect to review sort of the financial state of the project. You know, they wanted to right-size the project so that the project was an affordable project and also touched on every single school within the district. From there, Young &amp; Right conducted a building condition survey, which I'll talk a little bit about a little bit later, which really is just a survey of all the schools throughout the district. We worked with the, then we moved in and we started working with the capital planning committee to determine the scope, the schedule, the budget, things to really understand what the project costs were going to be and what the details and the issues were going to be around each individual task of the project. From there, the district's attorney conducted the secret process, got into the work with the board to get the board resolutions approved, moved forward with the publication of the legal notice, and now we are in the public meeting phase. And then we have a vote conducting taking place next week. So the user group. So the district administration met with individuals at each school district. This included faculty, staff, principals, you know, all the important folks at the schools to determine what the real educational needs were at the individual schools. They looked at different upgrades to the buildings to improve the student experience, you know, adding technology and overall just make sure that what, that the district's new proposed tasks and scope address all of the technology needs and the modernization that the school really needed. They, from there, they developed a list of scope items and they prioritized. This is a long list of all the educational needs, and then they prioritize sort of one to three, what they need to do right now versus what they can push off and do later. From there, Young &amp; Right developed a building condition survey where we essentially walked through every single building, some of the teachers, you know, what they saw was us with blue shirts on, walking through all the schools, looking under desks, above ceilings, under carpets, to really determine what the building condition was. We looked at every single system in the building, looking at windows, doors, roofs, site, you know, any kind of system within the building, HVAC, electrical, things of that nature, to really determine what the condition of the building was. We looked at health, safety, and welfare issues. We looked at ADA issues, all the critical infrastructure needs that the building really needed. And then again, we went through a whole, we had a whole list of those items from that survey, which really determined, you know, what were critical items that needed to be addressed in the building. From there, we worked with the district's capital planning committee to basically take the educational needs, all the educational things that were talked about and developed in the user group meetings, combine with BCS, the building condition survey, infrastructure issues, and we combined them into one large capital project. Now, this was, when it started, it was over a $200 million project. We worked with the capital planning committee to slowly whittle that down to, again, looking at what the financial advisor advised in terms of what was the best project the district could afford. So we whittled that down to $68.7 million. So that's how we determined the scope, and that's where the scope came from. So with the scope, the scope addresses not only the individual buildings, but it addresses sort of district-wide infrastructure and educational needs. So I'm going to start with district-wide items that literally touch every single school. One of the items, which is very critical and very important to the district, is the safety and security enhancements. This includes upgrades to the main entry, creating a secure entry. This secure entry is essentially a Sally Port that, you know, so as people come into the building, they actually have to stop. They have to go into a room with a space, with a person, so that, you know, they can't just get buzzed in and walk throughout the school. Again, this is a safety feature that's very important. All the school districts around in the state are doing this just as another layer of protection and security. We're looking to, we're proposing to add intrusion-resistant film on all the glass. What this is basically, this is a safety glazing that goes on all the glass on the first floor, the windows, you know, the front doors, anywhere where there is a side light or anything like that. And what this does is this adds another layer of security so that people can't just hit the glass and it shatters. So it's sort of like your car windshield. When you hit the glass, it cracks, but you can't just immediately go through the window. It adds that extra layer of security so that it gives that, those extra seconds and those extra minutes really matter when it comes to, you know, emergency services and getting to the site. So that's one safety feature. The other safety feature that we're looking to add is upgrades to the PA system to allow silent alarm capabilities where someone's able to press a button, you know, radio to the emergency services without notifying anyone who's doing something nefarious, so that, again, it just adds that extra layer of protection so that someone can get to the site quickly. We're also looking to add intrusion lock sets. These are essentially lock sets on every single classroom door. Right now, the way that the locks work on the doors in the classrooms is that the teacher has to lock the door from the outside, which is a security issue because if there's something happening in the corridor, you really don't want the teacher going out into the corridor to lock the door to secure the classroom. You want it to be locked from the inside. So this is what we're doing. We're upgrading all of the hardware throughout the buildings to add this intrusion lock set. Another safety feature is we're adding additional security. We're looking to add additional security cameras throughout the entire campus on each site, inside, interior, and exterior, to again provide that extra layer of surveillance and security around the buildings. And finally, we're also looking to upgrade the exterior lighting. As you guys can see, it's getting darker in the current months, and we're looking to upgrade the lighting so that it's a security feature, and we're looking to convert it to LED, which is an energy efficiency item that we're looking to add to the project. Another district-wide upgrade that we're looking to do is auditorium upgrades. These are upgrades to the HVAC systems. What this does is it takes all of the stale air that's sitting in those auditoriums right now, it recirculates that air, it brings in fresh air, to again adds another safety feature to the particular auditorium. We're looking to upgrade the stage lighting and LED replacements. If you guys have been in these auditoriums, they're a little dark now. We want to up, we want to really light these spaces up, really upgrade the lighting, add LED lighting so that they can really be used and be functional for the students. We're looking to upgrade the sound system. Basically, we want to take that old sound system, really upgrade it and bring it up to par to where, you know, a lot of other school districts are in terms of, you know, the more modern, you know, stage sound system. We're also looking to upgrade the stage rigging system. The stage rigging is essentially all that back-of-the-house stuff that happens behind the curtain where they got to pull down lighting and different things of that nature. We want to upgrade that to bring it up to modern standards. And then at the high school, we're looking to do a full, top-to-bottom renovation, including finishes, carpet, you know, seating where required throughout that entire auditorium. So the district-wide MEP systems. This is the coolest piece of the project, but it's probably one of the most important only because it is upgrades to your, to the systems that keep the students comfortable, that keeps the students warm, and it also provides that level of health and safety that you need. So this is upgrades to the mechanical systems and unit ventilators, which again brings in that fresh air so that you don't have that stale, you know, bad air sitting in the space. It converts and constantly moves the air in and out of the spaces. And we're also looking to upgrade the boiler system, the pneumatic systems, hot waters, heaters. What we're looking to do is really upgrade these systems because right now, you know, these systems are antiquated, they're old, they're costing the district a lot of money. So what we're looking to do is, as we upgrade these systems, is really save the district costs in terms of maintenance, things of that nature. We want to improve the reliability of the systems, and we also want to upgrade the system so that we're providing sustainable and energy-efficient systems so that as the district moves forward, you know, it's more of an energy-efficient systems that are working throughout the district. We're also looking to upgrade chimney stacks, elevator upgrades, other IT upgrades. We're also looking to add AC to the smallwood cafeteria and the middle school cafeteria as well. Right now, these spaces, they get a little warm, you know, in the summer months or in the sort of late spring months, and we want to upgrade these, bring in AC because now they can be used for when kids are taking the exams and things of that nature, so they're not just sitting in a dark, you know, hot space. So that's what we want to do there. And we're also looking to upgrade the plumbing fixtures and the pool filtration system at Windermere.
Yeah, and we currently have air conditioning in the Windermere cafeteria already, so that's why Windermere is not listed there. And the high school cafeteria was renovated in a previous project, and being in the basement, it's naturally cooler because of where it's located in the building, and it has an upgraded HVAC system that circulates a lot of fresh air. So we didn't think it was necessary to add air conditioning into that space because it's already pretty comfortable as it is.
All right, moving on to site-specific scope. We'll start with the high school. At the high school, one of the big scope items, and there's a number of scope items, but we're really hitting the highlights, the big-ticket items at each school. Number one, we're looking to completely renovate the existing gym. Right now, it's antiquated, the flooring is bad. We want to rip out that flooring, we want to upgrade the lighting to make this into a brighter, nicer space, bring it up to par with other school districts. We're looking to upgrade the windows, again, add that natural light to the space. We're also looking to upgrade the locker rooms and renovate that sort of antiquated interior vestibule right now as you enter the South Gym. So that's a major, major upgrade there. One of the other big-ticket items that we're looking to upgrade is, we're looking to take the existing field between Westmoreland and Kings Highway and upgrade that existing site to add multi-sport turf fields. The function will still remain the same in terms of being a sports field, baseball, you know, multi-sport, soccer, things of that nature. But what we're looking to do is upgrade portions of the area to add actual turf field. What this turf field does, it allows the district to actually utilize the space, you know, more year-round, you know. Unfortunately, when you get those spring months and you get a lot of rain, or fall months, we get that rain and that snow, what it does is it makes those fields unplayable. So the district actually has to go and go to different districts to actually practice and do things of that nature. So we want to upgrade Amherst's field to bring it up to par with a lot of the other school districts in the region. We're also looking to upgrade to add field lighting so that the kids can play the sports at night, scoreboards, new bleachers. We're looking, we are, this is a visualization, a conceptual visualization of what we're looking at, but one of the scope items that we're looking to do is add parking lots on both the Westmoreland and the Kings Highway side. But again, this is a visualization, we're looking to attempt to do this. One other item is we're looking to upgrade the, or add a team building with toilet rooms, again, to add that extra feature to the site. We're also looking to preserve green space where we can. The middle school. One of the big-ticket items at the middle school is we are looking to upgrade the life, the career and life safety skills rooms. These rooms are very antiquated, they're not up to par with current, you know, modern standards. So we're looking to upgrade the finishes, floors, ceilings, walls, all that good stuff, along with any kind of cabinetry, appliances. If you've been to the high school, you know, life skills room, that was a major renovation, and that's the level that we're looking to bring these rooms up to, including new technology and things of that nature. One other important item that we're looking to upgrade and resolve with this renovation, we're looking to, right now, there's a major traffic issue at the middle school, you know, at pickup and drop-off where, you know, there's, you know, kids are trying to cross the road, and there's major impacts there. So we're looking to renovate that pickup area and drop-off to improve the traffic flow, relieve the pressure at the beginning and the end of the day so that you don't get that same heavy traffic right there. So we're looking to resolve that with the design. Smallwood Elementary. One of the big items at Smallwood is we're looking to upgrade the existing main corridor area. It's a dark, dreary area as you enter the building. We're looking to upgrade that with new fixtures, new finishes, things of that nature. And we're looking to add new dividing partitions, and then upgrade the loading dock and add AC to the cafeteria. And again, this is a big piece for this school because right now, you can't really, you know, you're going to cafeteria in the summer months, and it is hot in there. So you want to really upgrade that. Smallwood, we are looking to, similar to what we're doing at the middle school, we're looking to renovate the pickup and drop-off areas, again, to alleviate that pressure that parents and the neighborhoods are feeling, you know, toward the end of the day, you've got to pick up kids, and there's a ton of traffic and things of that nature. So we're looking to completely renovate those areas to alleviate that pressure and to make that space more functional. But we're also looking to upgrade the tennis courts and bring them up to modern sports standards and safety standards.
Yeah, relative to the tennis courts, you guys may recall, we have brand-new courts behind the middle school here. We also have brand-new courts at the high school. They're utilized tremendously by the community as well as our sports teams. So our thinking around the elementary schools is that, you know, we want to have some tennis, but we also want to have some other availability there, like pickleball or four-square or some other opportunities for our teachers to integrate those courts into the curriculum as well as to provide some recreational use for the community at large. I'm told pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in America, so we're hoping that that is a community asset. I'm only aware of one set of outdoor courts in the town of Amherst over near Paradise Park, and from what I'm told, they're pretty hard to get on. So this would be a really nice addition to our community for our full-day schools recreationally.
Moving on to Windermere. As Tony mentioned earlier, one of the big pieces of this particular product, this particular school is to add the early childhood center, which is one-story. We're looking to add four to five classrooms along with an indoor play space. We do have a conceptual visualization of what that play space would look like. We just wanted to make it fun, exciting for the little kids as they experience this addition.
Yeah, just a little bit more regarding that. Our last spring, as sort of a surprise, the state doubled our UPK allocation. So we had received about $377,000 from New York State forever, for as long as we can remember. And last year, when the state finalized its budget, they sent out the state aid runs, which show all the different categories, and our pre-K allocation had doubled. So at first, I thought it was a mistake. Called Laura, who was on vacation in Myrtle Beach, and said, "There must be some mistake, our pre-K allocation doubled." When we came back following the spring break, we confirmed with state ed that they're looking to expand early childhood education for the purposes of adding full-day UPK. So in the past, we had about 139 half-day spots with our $377,000. With the doubling of it, we were able to add up to 72 full-day spots. So we added two full-day classrooms at Windermere, two full-day classrooms at Smallwood, and we're still partnering with A5C and ANS to offer half-day programming. But as you can imagine, we have a waitlist for our full-day program, and there's many people that would like that option for their children. So adding this addition would allow us to add up to four classrooms, or another option would be to move two of the classrooms that are in Windermere's existing building to that site, add two more classrooms, and then we'll open up some space at Windermere where we've seen an increase in our enrollment over the past few years. And we have people sharing classrooms and doing art on a cart, and, you know, music is being taught on stages and stuff like that. So the options with this addition would be, you know, additional UPK full-day programming, and it would also give us the opportunity to have some flexibility in the building to alleviate some of the pressure we're seeing with enrollment there.
As I mentioned earlier, we did conduct a building condition survey. So there's a number of items that need to be addressed as part of the building condition survey. This includes upgrades to the, you know, electrical opens at doors, you know, door closers, you know, various exterior doors throughout the building. But there's a long list of BCS, building condition survey items that are really about health, safety, and welfare that we're looking to address at each of the buildings. And again, Windermere, similar to what we're doing at the middle school and Smallwood, we are looking to renovate the pickup and drop-off areas, again, to alleviate that pressure that the teachers, the parents, and everyone is feeling at the beginning and the end of the day. We're also looking to upgrade the tennis courts, similar to what we're doing at Smallwood, to bring those up to current safety and sports standards with, along with the pickleball courts.
Yeah, we found, you know, we asked all of our parents to drive their kids during COVID to alleviate some of the distancing on the buses or to increase the distancing on the buses, and that's kind of stuck. So as you can see, at all buildings, we're looking to improve that experience for parents to drop off and pick up their kids. In addition, we found, you know, we encouraged our teachers, particularly in phys ed, to take advantage of the outdoors. And even in our climate, the teachers have found that kids like going outside, even when it's, you know, in the 40s this time of year. But with the grass getting muddy and dirty, you know, there's not too many places where they can go. So those courts at Smallwood and Windermere would also serve that purpose of allowing kids to go outside during the school day and have a place where it's relatively dry, and they can bundle up to stay warm, but they'd still be able to get out and get fresh air.
Now I'm going to turn it over to Laura Bezinski, who's going to talk about the budget and the finances.
Thank you. So one of the goals of the capital committee was to take all the priorities that the user groups had discussed and take the building condition survey answers and come up with a project that we were hoping wouldn't, would be supported by the community and would be affordable for the district. So as Superintendent Pennella mentioned at the beginning of our presentation, we had four main goals in mind, and this chart shows the allocation of dollars for the project into those four goals. And while every dollar in the project affects our students, we wanted to do our best to ensure that the majority of our dollars was affecting all of our students. So facility infrastructures and improvements, those are the dollars that are taking care of our buildings, our HVAC systems, our heating, our lighting. That's what keeps all of our students safe and comfortable. And then the educational space improvements are the dollars that are doing the improvements to just that, our educational spaces. And as you can see, more than half of the project dollars are going towards just those two goals, with 14% of the project moving towards the safety, which are the things that Rashawn spoke about at the beginning, the intrusion lock sets, protective film on the glasses, the secure entryways. And then the remaining 28% are site improvements, which will not only benefit our students, but also our community as well as we are looking to renovate the parent drop-offs and make some of that congestion in our buildings a little less and a little easier in the mornings and in the afternoons. So how are the dollars allocated into the different categories? So state aid, New York State has building aid, which is state's mechanism to ensure that all of its public buildings stay in good repair and in good condition so that there is safety and upgrades as needed to the buildings. So Amherst's reimbursement rate on all eligible expenses is just over 75%. So for every eligible dollar that we spend on a project, we get over 75 cents back to help offset the cost of the renovations. If we had to pay only local dollars for those renovations, they would never be affordable, and the state's buildings would be in disarray and falling down around our ears. 26% is the local share, and that's what will be covered by our tax levy and our taxpayers. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in the next slide. And then the remaining 8% are reserves and other funds. So we currently have $2.5 million in our capital reserve, which are funds that are already in place that will go towards the project. And we'll be able, assuming the project passes, we'll be able to use those funds to help pay for the initial costs of the project, which will push off the time that we need to go out to borrow, and we'll save costs there and on interest. The remaining funds is about $3.2 million that we will accrue over the next four to five years, and we'll have it on hand by the time we need to make our final payment for the project. So how does this affect our taxes? So the impact on a $100,000 home is estimated to be $36.60. So this is a one-time increase to your taxes. And then as the assessed value of your home increases, that cost increases proportionately. A $200,000 home would have a one-time increase of $73.20. Now, these are estimates because we're using current rates for the assessed value for the town. And then Rashawn will talk to you about what the schedule might look like and when we can expect to see construction of each of the buildings.
Me again, not Rashawn. But the schedule, we would look, following the vote, if it's a successful vote, we would look to get to if it's a successful vote, we would look to get to work relatively quickly because there is somewhat of a delay as far as design goes. So, what you see here in the proposed scope is just that. It's a proposal. You know, if the project passes, we would have to sit down and do the hard work of designing all of this stuff, which is, you know, roughly six to eight months. And then, we would have to submit it to state ed for review, which is estimated to be six to eight months as well. So, as far as construction goes, we would break it up into three phases. Our goal would be to have construction begin in 2024. Typically, our construction is done in the summer months, when our students aren't in session. There are some areas that we could get working on, you know, during the school year, like the addition or some of the site improvements, where we wouldn't interrupt instruction in the buildings. But, our construction would begin roughly at the elementary schools in phase one around 2024, go into the middle and high school in phase two and three, and hopefully conclude around 2027. So, that's a proposed schedule. The phasing also incorporates what the state calls a maximum cost allowance. So, we've done a significant amount of work in our high school, and every five years, you have a certain amount of money that you can spend in each of your buildings. And we would need to put the high school in phase three in order to allow that maximum cost allowance to reset in order for us to do additional work there. Although it's our oldest building, and, you know, in some cases, our neatest building, you know, we still have to wait for that cost allowance to reset. So, the phasing would be figured out following the vote. But, in general, phase one would include our elementary schools. Phase two would include the middle school and possibly the athletic turf complex. And then, phase three would be the high school. That's a very general, broad stroke with that. More details will be forthcoming. Once again, we started with this, but the vote is a week from today, December 13th, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM in the South Gym, same place where our annual budget rule is conducted. And at this point, I know we had some people sign in that would like to ask questions and/or make comments. So, I'll go back to President Steinle for that process.
So, I'll call each of you that at least signed in for now. We ask you to keep your questions, you're allowed to ask questions. Somebody from the administration here will answer those questions if we're able to. If not, we will get back to you. We are asking that you keep your time to three minutes per person. And if we start to get a lot of repeats and stuff, we will move on and ask you to submit things in writing. So, the first, at least on the sheet I have here, signed in is David, forgive me if I pronounce it wrong, Ham. If you could stand and say your name, or your address, please.
Dave Ham, 365 Barreman Drive.
Our district clerk has to say it.
My name is David Ham. I've been the stagecraft supervisor for the drama club at the high school since 2006. And I've probably done about 100 shows in that space over the last 50 years. Our children are third-generation Amherst grads, and I feel very fortunate to be the beneficiary of this outstanding school system. And I'm very much in favor of supporting its continued excellence and appreciate that there are great many things that need to be done in our school buildings to keep them safe and enhance the educational experience of our students. And I'm in support of those efforts. My dismay arises, however, when I see significant sums of money spent without commensurate planning or input. During my tenure here, the odd has been touched by no less than three capital projects in the last, I would say, 12 to 15 years. Each of them has yielded meaningful improvements, and some have come with serious shortcomings and significant unnecessary costs and lost opportunities. I could delve into details, but right for you. The shortcomings, I feel, are frequently in large part because stakeholders and users of the facilities are not adequately involved in the planning stages. And I just want to encourage the board and the administration to make every effort to include the individuals who are using the space to have input on what they feel needs to be done and what improvements they'd like to see made in those spaces.
Next, we have Robin Dubler. Did I say that right? I'm sorry.
I live at 150 Barreman. I was just wondering if you could tell us a little bit more about the turf project. There's a lot of concern about the space being developed, the cost of it, how you're going to offset it. You talked about green space in your presentation, what you're going to do to make up the green space, if you're going to cover that with turf and asphalt. And how often will the turf have to be replaced, and at what cost? Has all, you know, the maintenance of the turf, will it be fenced off, will it be locked? Can you tell us a little bit more about that aspect of the program, or the project?
Sure. I'll try to answer all of your questions, but I will preface it with saying that, you know, we have not delved into the design details that, you know, you may be looking for. Because, as you can imagine, our architectural team would be the ones to do that, and they would like to see the results of the project before they design it, you know, and make sure that it is moving forward. But, in general, we have a baseball field out there. Our softball field used to be out there years ago. It's been moved to behind the middle school. And I've been superintendent of the district for seven years. And in the seven years that I've been superintendent, we've had three seasons that I can recall where we were unable to host a home baseball or softball game because the field didn't dry out in enough time. As you may know or may not know, the spring sports season in Western New York starts around March 15th. So, typically, our kids are indoors, hitting in batting cages. They are at somewhat of a disadvantage because many times, they're not going outside to play in a game until they travel somewhere else that does have a turf facility in order to do that. We've bussed our kids to Kenmore, to Sweet Home, to Williamsville in order for them to be able to practice on a full baseball diamond during the time that ours is too wet to be able to, you know, play on it. So, our goal is to, you know, really, on the surface, change the surface that's out there in order to make it playable during the months that we need it to be playable, which is, you know, early March, as well as, you know, in the fall, in August, September, and October, when it starts to, the weather starts to change again. So, we're looking to have a baseball and softball diamond out there, first and foremost. But, currently, if you've seen how we use the space in the fall, we have three fields out there that typically run north and south in that space. One that goes from Westmoreland, or two that go from Westmoreland to Kings, and then, another one that's normally closer on the Barreman side. And we use it for field hockey, soccer, typically in the fall months. And our football teams will practice out there. So, we're looking to change the surface and improve drainage so it's usable when we need to use it. Our goal would be for it to also, similar to our current turf complex, to be a community asset. So, it would be available recreationally for the community to use, as long as that's done so, you know, appropriately, and there's not vandalism or damage out there. I'm not sure if I caught the rest of your questions. So, we haven't decided, you know, it wouldn't be, if it is fenced in around the perimeter, it wouldn't be locked all the time. It would be locked during the times when we didn't want people in there, which is typically overnight, when it's dark. But, it would be available during daylight hours for people to use recreationally. I'm not sure what else you mentioned in there.
Well, you had mentioned in your presentation about you would offset it with other green space. And I was wondering what, if you can elaborate on that.
Yeah, it's a little bit of a tricky space because it's large, but it's, you know, rectangular. So, when we try to lay out different scenarios in that space, you know, it becomes a little bit tricky as far as, you know, how you might be able to arrange things so that you can play on those things simultaneously. So, in this particular layout, which is just proposed rendering, softball is here, and baseball is where it currently is, just tucked back a little bit more. And in the outfield, there is a field that could be used for field sports, field hockey, lacrosse, soccer. Then, there's a standalone field that is, again, for field sports, like soccer, field hockey, lacrosse. You know, obviously, for the spring season, there would be, you know, fencing that would be put up here and here for, you know, home runs. And then, this space would be utilized more for practice as opposed to, for playing events. As far as green space goes, you know, conceptually, we want to have sort of a central location that could be like a plaza for the teams, the parents, to gather, whether it's a concession area, whether it's an area that has bathrooms. We recognize that that space is used recreationally. So, to the extent possible, we would try to preserve as much green space as we could while also accomplishing the goal of having playing fields for field sports, as well as baseball and softball. So, this is one of several mockups that we looked at because, as Mr. Ham had mentioned, we want our end-users, you know, our coaches, our, you know, people that are going to be using it to be part of the design process. And we had some preliminary discussions with some of those folks, and things came up that we never even thought of. Like, for example, you know, the sun sets in the west. So, that's over here on the Barreman side, and you may not want your baseball home plates facing west because then the batters will have the sun in their eyes. So, originally, we had these configured a different way. And then, you know, when we talked to the baseball and softball coaches, they said, "Well, you know, I don't know if we want the kids looking into the sun when they're batting, that may, you know, minimize their experience." You know, when you talk to the folks that are playing field sports, they typically want their fields running north and south because in this area of the country, we normally get a west wind. So, if you have this orientation turned, you know, then there's a time, if it's a windy day, that half the game, you have the wind in your face, which is, you know, minimizes the experience for the game and creates somewhat of a different game plan and how you approach it. So, at this point, our goal is to preserve as much green space as possible, maximize playing surfaces for baseball, softball, as well as field sports, and make it a community asset where our community can use it recreationally, as well as, you know, competitively.
And do you know what type of surface you would use? Because the crumbled tires that they use in these fields are toxic and are carcinogenic. That would eventually make its way into the water system. What can you tell us about that aspect of what type of surface you plan on using?
It would be very similar to the one we currently have.
So, the ground-up tire crumbs?
Yeah, it's typically a combination of sand and ground-up tire, or, you know, crushed rubber, or whatever. But, they, you know, I could argue to death with the knowledge I acquired in replacing the turf surface on our existing stadium. But, you know, there's a split film surface, there's a mono film surface. And typically, what you see in the northeast is a hybrid surface, where there's some split film and some mono film. And that's mostly for safety reasons because the split film is exactly what it sounds like. Over time, it splits and it expands. And what we saw with our original turf surface from 2004 was that eventually it flattened. So, it became almost like a flat carpet surface, like the old-time AstroTurf. And now, the mono film surface stands up more like natural grass and is safer for the kids and actually lasts longer. So, I think that was one of your questions. When we put in an artificial turf surface, the state's expectation is that it will last the life of the bond, which is typically 15 years. And if you have to replace it prior to the 15-year timeline, there's a deduction on how much they will age you on it. So, our first turf at the stadium lasted about 14 years before we replaced it. And we would expect, the technology for turf is only improving. So, we would expect that this turf would last in that same range. And we've become very versed at maintaining it, as well as grooming it, you know, and we have all that equipment because of our existing turf field.
And did you see the number of injuries of student athletes go up with it? Because, you know, all the studies indicate that injuries to students go up 58% on turf as opposed to grass.
Well, I have seen some of that, those studies. A lot of it depends on the type of turf that you put in, as well as the type of footwear that the kids wear. You know, typically, when you're playing on a surface that is an artificial black grass that's referred to, you don't want to be wearing cleats that are designed for natural grass because the studs on the bottom are positioned differently. So, in most cases, if the kids are playing on this surface, they'll want to have like a conical stud on the bottom of their cleat as opposed to the ones that are a little bit more, I guess, triangular. But, I can tell you that I've been made aware, on our existing field, that we've got some safety issues as well because it's not exactly a level surface. So, we've had, unfortunately, some of our student athletes, you know, separate knees and those type of things because as they're running, they hit a low spot, or, you know, they hit a soft spot or a hole in the grass, and that becomes dangerous as well. So, this would be more level. But, some of the responsibility, I think, you know, would be on our students to wear the appropriate footwear, and that information is available. I happen to be a soccer dad, so I'm very familiar with the stud pattern of cleats.
Okay, we'll move on to Tom Soder.
Thank you. Tom Soder, I'm at 159 Barreman. I'd like to point out that turf isn't green space. So, that's a boondoggle that architects and engineers like to kind of throw out there. You're going to find that there's going to be a lot of opposition to developing that, at least as far as it's been rendered. Looks like a great sports field. I think it's going to run some objections with the lighting, with an audio system with a building, and also with traffic. There's currently occasionally a traffic issue as it exists today. So, you know, you're attempting to resolve traffic issues at other locations throughout the district. Just kids, for some reason, don't take the bus anymore, which I never quite understood, you know, is they can take the bus so that they're not backing their parents up down the street. But, I did just want to talk to the school briefly. Give a little education to the Board of Education, because you've probably not been on the Board of Education as long as some of us have been in the design and construction industry. But, I just want to make sure you know how this game works. Rashawn, who I've worked on projects with his firm before, respected architects, so, but also very good salespeople. They are consultants on this project, who are paid a flat fee for the consulting services. They also get to build it. So, I don't know if the general public or the board was quite aware that there is a conflict of interest there, and that is not a consultant, that is a salesperson. Salespeople come in and say, "This is what I want you to do." And then, they make you buy it. So, in this case, we come up with a half-baked idea for, say, a turf field that has lights and an audio system that there was no community input. And, but, oh, somebody wanted it, didn't need it. And I think we all agree that the field needs a little bit of work. Perhaps it could be leveled both once in a while. But, the image of a salesperson, Turner Construction, for example, whose names are all over this presentation on your behalf as the board, beware that they have a conflict of interest. They stand to benefit financially from this bond act. And yet, they're sitting up there behind you instead of out here, like a resident who votes and pays taxes in this district. Or, in the case of some of my neighbors, already have a stadium in their backyard, which, that's fine, works for me. It's got turf on it, it's got lights, and it's got a sound system. So, when these projects come out, oh, what can we do to get the number as big as possible and whittle it down? They'll throw the kitchen sink in there because somebody wants it, never asking if it's needed, and never asking if it's appropriate to spend taxpayer money or bond improvement money on anything other than the necessities for education. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Clapper.
Hi, Eric Clapper, at 221 Washington Highway, right about there. So, my backyard backs up to the fields between. And so, I used, I've got three children. They'll all be in Smallwood next year. We're very invested in the backfield and the area there. I kind of, I came with a lot more concerns and questions about specific parts of the design. But, I was really encouraged to see the schedule where that design period, you know, is forthcoming. And so, along with Mr. Han, I guess I would just really, it would be really great to see if there was an opportunity for a stakeholder-rich committee, or, you know, community voice, neighborhood... for a stakeholder-rich committee or, you know, community voice, neighborhood voice in the body. It's very exciting. My, you know, my son plays baseball, my other two girls, you know, they'll most likely be playing in these fields as student athletes. I graduated Amherst, took a while to get back here, and I bought a pretty hard ticket in the neighborhood. I'm really excited about it, I'm really invested in it. And I know that the board and the administration have spectacular capabilities of really putting great projects together and putting, you know, good programs together. So the whole Capitol project is really, really exciting. It's just this particular piece for me and the neighbors that I've talked to. We have questions about the light, we have questions about drainage, access. You know, we are out there all the time. We're really good neighbors, we, you know, plow sidewalks so that kids can get to school. We're here when you guys aren't, you know, look out for the field, we look out for the building, we look out for the property. And so it's encouraging to hear that that design process is going to be available. And I would just, you know, again, hope that you talk to the folks, those end users as much as you can. I know there are plenty of neighbors who are really, really excited for the 59th project if they were part of thinking about asking those questions. So some just specific questions that, you know, we know that it's a wet field. A lot of us belong that, our side on Washington Highway, for example, we spent thousands of dollars on drain talent in our backyard because the field is higher. There's a swell that goes through that, you know, I dig out every summer so that the water kind of stays there. My fence is seven feet away from the girls' varsity soccer bench. So I guess, you know, I have questions about drainage and then I think access just because we are out there every single day. In the winter, when, you know, there aren't sports teams, I throw a ball at night. You know, we utilize it like it's our backyard, so. I don't think I had a question there, but just I would hope that you would involve the neighbors in the design process.
Yeah, I would say just a couple of comments about the last two comments. You know, the design phase is comprehensive and certainly includes a large stakeholder group. The previous gentleman mentioned something about an audio system, which is not, hasn't been talked about or hasn't been presented in here, so I'm not sure where that came from, but there's.
Well, nothing's been presented, it's just a random bunch of ideas thrown at the board that we're supposed to just cop up money for.
Yeah, but we, I mean, there hasn't been a discussion about an audio system. You know, obviously, we realize that could be problematic. You know, we currently use those fields, as I mentioned, we have three fields out there in the fall that are utilized every day. You know, we have our baseball field out there and we also utilize that field for lacrosse in the spring. Our kids practice out there every day. So we would expect that level of decorum relative to sound to be relatively consistent to what you're currently experiencing. And you mentioned it would be nice to be mowed, you know, we would love to mow it too, but it's too wet. And you can't put a mower on something when it's too wet, as you know. So the improvements to the drainage would more than likely improve the experience that our neighbors, our experience out there. You know, we wouldn't be able to crown it so it drains into your yards. You know, the drainage system is typically underground and moves away from, you know, the areas, so it would probably.
But there would be a large, like, nine-foot receptacle underground that would be.
Yes, there will be a retainer system installed.
So it wouldn't, yeah, so like the green space that does remain won't be a pond or a swale or something like that, retention.
All right, we have Shannon Lemke.
Hi, I'm Shannon Lemke, I am at 396 Washington. I would like to thank you all for taking the time and putting in the effort to help put together this Capitol project. Like other districts around us, you have put the safety and the well-being of our students above all else. It's heartbreaking that we need to install main entries that are exceptionally secure and intruder-resistant film on windows and intrusion locks on all of the doors. But this is what we must do to keep our children safe. Sadly, the tragedy at Robb Elementary in New Bowling showed us all how necessary these upgrades are. In addition to these safety measures, I am overjoyed to know that our board is also showing our current and equally as important, our future residents that we truly value the education of our youngest students by adding an early childhood center. Having a space that is dedicated to help these students helps to make an environment that allows for optimum learning. As an early interventionist myself in the neighboring district, I personally know the positive impact that this will have on student growth. And finally, the sports field. Having two student athletes currently at Amherst, I know how hard it is to get field time. With the number of teams that we have and the large number of students that play, safe, dependable fields in the Dennis Floyd section of Amherst property are long overdue. While my children will not personally benefit from this change, they will be gone. I value the role that sports has in creating a community that others want to be a part of and intentionally move here to be a part of. This work is no small feat and the cost is reflective of that work. With the funding from the state as well as an exceptionally small increase in our school taxes, we can help to keep our children safe. I urge my neighbors to please vote yes this Tuesday and help keep our children safe.
Thank you. Next, we have Jamie Groff.
Nope, I'm good. They just told me to sign it, so I signed it.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Next, we have Bill Blake.
I prefer to sit.
That's mine.
I've lived here for 48 years, I've never come to one of these meetings.
Well, welcome.
Yeah, it's very bright. I've always paid my taxes, I've never complained. I've watched them go from three to seven. Accepted it, my kids went to school here. When I got this in my door, and I know a lot of people here, from what I heard on Facebook last night, were not even aware of this. I was, to say I was outraged at the dollar amount and the amount of discretionary spending in here, to be dropped on taxpayers in this type of an economy is outrageous. And I know that most of it comes from the state, it's all coming from the same pot. And I think that people need to be aware that those of us who have lived here for 40, 45, 50 years have seen the taxes go up and up and up, it doesn't seem like there's any end to it. And I think that people need to look at this and say, yeah, pickleball courts, that's nice, I mean. But you're going to have people struggling to pay their heating bills this year. You're seeing inflation, you're seeing the debt cost for putting these bonds out there probably going to be going up maybe another three quarters of a basis point in the next couple of months and maybe more. So that's all I wanted to say because I've never been here, never objected, always paid my taxes, and my kids received a great education here, and I appreciate that. The other thing I will say about the turf, are you aware that the NFL Players Association have an operating place right now to get artificial turf taken out of the 13 stadiums in the NFL because of the number of injuries? Have you heard the news about Odell Beckham being here interviewing with the Bills? If you watched the Super Bowl, he had a non-contact injury that's kept him out this whole season. And I appreciate the honesty about the number of injuries on these turf. There's nothing wrong with natural grass, it's much easier to maintain, it's not going to wear out, and it's what I grew up with when I was in high school in Buffalo. So that's all I wanted to say and I hope that people will take that into consideration next week. And I don't know why the taxpayers get the last shot at this thing. And we've been going, this has been going on for two or three years with COVID. And then a week before the vote, people are now aware of this and can have a say, so. That's all I have to say. I'm here for the rest, I'm not moving to Florida. I'm going to have to pay the taxes and I'm glad I was able to get it off my chest.
Thank you.
Thank you. As a side note, we don't control the taxes. The town controls the value on your house, which is what you pay the taxes on. So if your taxes are going up, 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 look at the town. We don't control anything to do with that.
I understand.
Next, we have Matt Miller.
Hi, good evening. Matt Miller, I live at 197 Washington Highway, just a couple doors down, closer to Main from my friend and neighbor Eric Clapper here. I'm going to be brief because Eric said many of the things that I was planning on saying. And I did have some detailed questions about, you know, lighting and particularly drainage because that is a very wet area. I know Eric has, I have as well, invested a lot of time and money and energy in a backyard, a house that I've only lived in for three years now. But like him, I have kids who are out there on a nightly basis. And I'm very much in favor of this project, I just want to be clear about that. I just am curious about the input that will be sought, if any, from people who are directly impacted by where their properties are on those neighboring streets. Things like lighting, is it going to be a dark sky complaint? Is there a grading and drainage plan? And I'm confused a little bit about the process because from the timeline I saw in the PowerPoint, it looks like the SEACRA process has already been completed, the design has not. So what has already been done with respect to a drainage plan, a grading plan? And how did it get through SEACRA and had it passed? Like, what is the conclusion there? You know, I'm used to the lighting a little bit, the noise from the football field, it doesn't bother me. And we're out there, I take the kids down to football games all the time, it's exciting. I actually think it's an asset to my property value and families will want to move there if I ever do move out of my house. I think it's a necessary component of this overall project to stay competitive with other districts and keep kids here, retain them so that they don't go off, the student athletes don't go off to private schools. I think it's ambitious, but done the right way and input sought from the right stakeholders that it can really be an asset to the district.
Yeah, growing up, there was a Matt Miller that I was aware of, that was a heck of an hockey goalie, that young kid. Ah, okay, okay. A good friend of mine from the South Towns, maybe it had been either your teammate or the rival, a guy by the name of Mark Greeden.
Evening.
Yeah. But anyway, I can let our team speak to the SEACRA process a little bit more because, you know, as the gentleman before had mentioned, you know, we do hire young, right, in Turner. And I think in full transparency that they are hired as contractors for us to help us with this process because we're educators. So we're not engineers, we're not, you know, architects, we're not construction management folks. So, you know, certainly we have a contract with them, we pay them for their services, but their services are valuable to us because if we were doing construction on our own and not having somebody manage it and design that, it wouldn't be the end product that we are hoping for. So I would defer to our architectural firm regarding the SEACRA process to answer that question.
Yeah, I'll just touch on really quickly, so the SEACRA is developed by the district's attorney. So the district's attorney looks at the scope of the project, they develop the SEACRA and they walk that through the process and they present that to the board. In terms of the design and the, you know, like you mentioned, the environmental, this, our design still has to go to the state for a full review. So they review our documents from top to bottom. So when it goes to the State Education Department, they review everything to make sure that it's meeting current environmental standards, you know, architectural standards, MEP standards, the whole gammas.
And our, you know, relative to lights, you know, our goal, I mean, the lights that are at our current stadium are older. You know, they're from the, you know, early 2000s. And certainly the technology and efficiency of those lights has improved. If you've had the opportunity to travel to other school districts that have done projects in the more recent past, you know, you can see that the, you know, the lights are directional, they go down, there's not a halo effect that goes outward. They're LED, so they're efficient, they're not shining in people's, you know, kitchens and living rooms. So what we would end up doing is, you know.
But they do at 150 Berryman, the football field goes right into my kitchen.
Yeah, and that's older technology. So that was my point, these ones would be different than the current ones that we have. Because since we put those in, they've improved, you know, stadium lighting significantly. So one of the things that happens prior to any lighting plan being finalized would be a candle study to make sure that we're not illuminating things that we don't want to illuminate. But your point is well-taken and I think it illustrates what I'm trying to say, which is the lights would be significantly different than the ones that are at the current stadium because in 2022, the technology has improved drastically from when those were put in.
Okay, next, we have Sarah Schultz.
I'm going to, Jen and I are going to speak together in the conference room, just do the six-minute thing, okay? Sarah Schultz, I actually, I'm an alum, I don't live in the district, I live in the village of Williamsville. But I'm on two committees for the town of Amherst, the Energy Conservation Citizens Advisory Committee and the Green Energy Community Committee. And Jen, do you want to introduce yourself?
I do live in the town of Amherst, here at Wernher Memorial Elementary School, 256 Cal-9A Avenue. Janet Lennich is my name. And we're here to really talk about, I know you've been kind of focused on the playing fields, we're going to talk about something very unsexy, which is heating, cooling, and hot water and how that, and your energy systems in the Amherst school, central school district. And specifically, I know you're going to be replacing boilers, which probably are like 70 years old or some ridiculous amount of time, for high-efficiency boilers, which Mark, I think, he and I talked on the phone about it, which is a huge step in the right direction. What we're hoping is that, similar to the gentleman to my right, that there would be more community input on things related to energy because there's so much opportunity now for investment. The federal government has passed the Inflation Reduction Act. There's money from the federal government, from the state government, from NYSERTA to upgrade systems in a way that could revolutionize your heating, cooling, and even hot water. So I myself am renovating a house and we crunched the numbers and decided it would make more sense to get rid of the gas heat and just go with a geothermal system because we can get AC out of it as well as our hot water heat. And the cost is much reducing over the longer term. I'm planning on being alive for at least another 20 years. So I figure it'll pay off. But I also think schools, you know, they're going to be here, why after I'm dead and gone? So you guys need to kind of almost start thinking, 50 years, how? Like, are we on the cutting edge? There are school systems that are thinking this way. And Sarah, do you want to talk about?
Well, I'd just say that I've lived with geothermal for 10 years now and also with solar. So, you know, it's like when you get, basically, you know, after you pay the price of it, you're just getting free energy for, you know, and they last longer than 25 years. They reduce, you know, their efficiency, but they do last longer. And natural gas is only going up, gas prices are only going up. So serious consideration should be, you know, given to ground source or air source heat pumps. There is an nonprofit called Rewiring America that published the Inflation Reduction Act Savings Calculator. They also have guides for school systems that are transitioning to greener infrastructures. Heat pumps are actually three to five times more energy efficient than the most efficient gas furnaces. So, you know, with climate change, we're going to need so much more air conditioning. I mean, we need in the cafeteria now, but we're going to need it all over the school. So it's like incredible not to be thinking about long-term thinking our problems because we're always thinking short-term. Along with cost benefits, there's.
Yeah, I think there's also health benefits because natural gas is methane. Methane has been associated with birth defects in children and asthma. And of course, we know that occasionally, it doesn't happen often, occasionally a gas leak will cause explosion. And there's a lot of leakage into the atmosphere and methane, especially from fracking fields and in transit to schools and cities can leak. And that causes a lot more problems with the warming. It's 25 times more potent as a greenhouse gas than CO2. So even though I know everybody's trying to reduce their carbon footprint, they're not thinking maybe their methane, the methane that's being used could also be contributing to greenhouse gases. So just to start thinking more in the long term and get the community. So just to start thinking more in the long term and get the community involved. You know, I agree with the gentleman who was sitting there and said, wow, we're hearing about this now, it would have been nice to have more input along the process. Um, because I don't even know how old the boilers were in these buildings. And if they, you know, if you plan ahead, you can transition it when they need to be replaced and it won't seem like an extra cost. It's more of an investment that pays off over the long term.
Absolutely, and the educational benefits are huge. We worked as C R Club Chair for five years, we worked with the Buffalo School Districts and with their Board of Education. They, uh, we got over eight years working with them, Montante Solar put nineteen systems on their schools. And McKinley, the kids are so invested in these solar projects, that a lot of them end up going to Alfred State and working in the industry. Um, it's just been, it's a huge value to science, to math, um, you know-
Technology.
Technology for the children. Um, so it's, it's fantastic educational opportunity. Uh, there's examples of this being done in St. Paul, Minnesota, climate, uh, you know, similar to ours, they're installing geothermal in their high school.
Yeah, and I think, keep in mind too, New York State passed the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act in twenty nineteen. That commits New York State to reducing their CO2 emissions. You know, what is Amherst Central Schools doing? They are upgrading their systems, which is great. Every, every improvement in efficiency is gonna be less fuel used. But can we really, as a state, you know, and can Amherst Central School District really help push things even further? And become a school district where they talk about in Albany and say, look what Amherst Central Schools has done.
I think you're six minutes-
I think it is.
What nature-based solutions for the ball fields, please?
I noticed we had a couple gentlemen come in late, did you want to speak or have any questions? Please. I'm sorry.
I did as well, I've got a, just a thirty-second thing to say.
All right, I'll, sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, I can get brief, I'm a man of Brian Emerson, one five two Kings Highway, I got three kids at Smallwood, um, class of ninety-eight. You know, I couldn't say, you know, more emphatically that this is really an outstanding project. Commanding Board's vision, uh, for going big on this and making these types of improvements. Things like reworking the drop-off pickups of these schools is tremendous. And, um, I, I'm most excited about the turf field project, I think it's much needed and, uh, to keep our district competitive. Four houses down from it, you know, I love the traffic that happens a, a couple times a day on my street on Kings Highway. I think this probably improves that traffic a little bit. But we love seeing people, we love seeing all the faces out there, uh, I love making faces at, at the people that park in front of my house. You know, bring it on. We're out in this field all the time, having it turfed over just makes it so much more usable. I'm on the Board of Central Amherst, we'll probably get a little benefit out of this tangentially too. Um, I, I just think it's really great for the community and the district, and it's gonna help us be more competitive, so commend you for it.
Thank you. Ladies first.
Just very, very-
Could you say your name and address, please?
Diane Johnson, one eighty-six Berryman.
Thank you.
I am the only house that gets, um, fenced off inside at the home games for, um, football. They blocked the street and they let us in and out, and I'm beyond thrilled with being locked inside that gate, so that's not a complaint. I don't have any answers, just more, here's, here's where my concerns are. First is additional traffic on that street, which is quite challenging as it is now. They've done lots to, to widen and, and block off, but doing a whole lot more traffic is, is, is a scary thing. My backyard is the baseball field, so especially when they rent it out in the summer, it's just wild, the traffic, the trash. I've made a call a time or two, because it's been left a mess. So my concerns are traffic, the lights, because I'm right there, um, which some of that's been addressed and I'm grateful for. Um, the not needed mega tax increase for this whole community at a time when it's very difficult for not just seniors, but everybody. Um, if there is audio, hopefully that'll be, I'm right there, somebody will either put on some Good Rick James or, you know, something. The, the only other thing that concerns me that probably nobody knows about is when the, when the other field across the street got redone. Erie County said that it's because of where my house is, we were inundated with rats. Inundated. And Erie County had to come three or four times to help bait and stuff in my yard. And they said, they come from over by the fields, they're underneath the fields, and you dig up that field and you're just gonna have that issue. I'm just throwing that out there, um, I don't know if there's anything that can be done about the rats underneath the field. But it, it was not a pleasant year for us when that one got done, I don't look forward to it again. Um, but taxes, lights, parking, those are all concerns for me, being in the strategic location that I'm in, which I love. Um, but extra traffic will be quite challenging.
Okay.
That's it.
Did you want to speak?
No, I'm all set. All right, Shannon Salaco.
Just one second, please.
Well, I, I just, I mean, traffic's one of the things that we haven't commented on. Our goal is to improve the traffic, um, because we have that parking lot behind the stadium off of West Moreland that nobody ever seems to want to use.
They don't.
You know, I always say, old habits die hard in Snyder, um, street parking is one of those. You know, we expanded- We, we expanded the parking lot back here, because we have people parking on Saratoga and parking along the drive from Saratoga to get back here into the parking lot. And we put no parking signs along that drive, and people still park on Saratoga and park on that drive when they're coming to softball and baseball games. So we're gradually trying to steer people back into the lot, we put a nice sidewalk so they can get out to the fields. Uh, but our goal would be to improve the experience for our neighbors in the surrounding area by getting some of the parking off the street and into a parking lot. We don't anticipate that usage would increase relative to the fields, because we already are using it quite a bit. As I mentioned, we have three fields out there in the fall, and then we have baseball and multiple fields, sports lacrosse fields out there in the spring. So we think the usage would be similar, but we're trying to get people off of West Moreland and off of Kings, so it doesn't impede the traffic. And, you know, we're not narrowing that street even more.
Will it be rented more?
Um-
Updates?
It's not something, probably not more than we currently are. I mean, we have, you mentioned we have the New Era Tournament for baseball in the summer. Um, we're not first into the baseball, softball, turf field. Um, so I would imagine that it's not going to be, oh my gosh, there's turf in Amherst, you know, everybody wants to come here. I mean, there's fields at Ken East, Ken West, St. Joe's, Wil East, Wil North, um, Sweet Home, Chikdawaga, Grand Island, The Few. And those are just the ones I can rattle off, off the top of my head. So it wouldn't be similar to like two thousand and four, when we put the stadium turf in. We were the first turf in Western New York for football and field hockey and soccer. So it was everybody coming to Amherst because they have turf. Um, there's a lot of turf fields that are available now, so I don't anticipate that we're gonna be inundated with those requests. But we do want to partner with our community partners, like Central Amherst, where we've had a longstanding partnership with our ball fields. Or the New Era Tournament, which we've done for several years. And in fact, New Era donates like three thousand dollars worth of hats to our baseball teams every year, um, for us allowing them to use those fields. So our kids are actually wearing major league equivalent hats every year, because New Era donates them as a, a courtesy for us allowing them to use the field.
They just need to clean up when they leave.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
Shannon.
Sorry.
Shannon Salaco, one thirty-nine Berryman. Um, I'm having a real issue with the size of this project. It's equal to your operating budget annually, uh, sixty-eight million dollars, thereabouts. In a district that historically has seen subtle sort of declines in enrollment over the past decade or two, if you go back and take a look at the numbers. Um, I think you can get the vast majority of the benefits you're looking for with a much smaller budget. You guys have considered other budgeting options that you may present to the people that we could vote on? For example, that field fifteen or thirteen million dollar project, putting turf in, you probably could solve the drainage issue, which is your problem. Spring wet fields, I know I'm on that field all the time, wall's not an issue. Probably by installing some drain dial and letting it, without putting turf, without putting fences, without putting more parking lots in, um, and you'll still get ninety percent of the benefits. You guys looked at other things like that?
Yeah, well, um, we concluded a project, um, in the recent past, I can't give you the exact timeline, because COVID kind of blurs the last few years. But in our last project, which I think was voted on in twenty sixteen by the voters, um, one of the proposals we had was to, um, improve drainage as well as irrigation in those fields and level them for health and safety reasons. Unfortunately, as that project progressed, we saw increasing construction costs. And that was a decision we had to make as the, the project played out, to cut that out of it and delay it for a future referendum. Um, when we came around to looking at that space a second time, um, the thought was, particularly from our student athletes and coaches, that an artificial surface would serve our students better than a natural surface, just given the climate that we have in, uh, Western New York. And the timing of the seasons. Again, our spring sport season starts around March fifteenth. As superintendent, I have in seven years called more snow days in the month of March than I have any other month in the calendar. Um, we typically get that nor'easter that comes up in, you know, the, in, in that time of year. And we've had more snow days, except for the blast, you know, historic event, which seems to be happening every eight years. But, um, it's, you know, I've called more snow days during that month than any other month on the calendar. Any other?
Uh, hello, uh, my name is Dan Sarzinski, I live at one fifty-six Berryman Drive. Uh, I have to say, I am very excited about this project, um, so many aspects of it. Uh, I've got two boys, they're in eleventh grade and ninth grade, they went to Smallwood, they went to the middle school. So I'm excited to hear about the facility upgrades. Um, but I'm especially excited about the sports upgrades and in particular to the turf field. Uh, our house backs up to the, um, the football field, the track. And that has been one of the, the, the best features about living in that, this neighborhood over the past eighteen years. Um, just the, the energy, the life, you know, that you have with the kids playing sports. Um, as far as, you know, baseball goes, that's a big issue, as Mr. Penella said, uh, the first two months of the season, the boys are practicing indoors, on a basketball court. They don't even get outside until, you know, midway through the season for their first game on grass, which is often their first time on grass. Um, so it's gonna be, I think it'll be a, a point of pride for, um, the, the kids who play sports, the kids who play baseball, the kids who play softball. But sports in general, um, academics matter, academics is very important to my wife and me and our kids, but athletics is important too. Um, kids, families make decisions on where they're gonna go to school, um, based in large part, for better for worse, on athletics. Or maybe it's, for some parents, it's half and half. Um, and I think having an upgrade to these facilities, putting the turf in, um, is gonna attract families, retain families. Amherst is an outlier right now. We've been to all the schools that Mr. Penella said for baseball, because we couldn't play on our home field. We've gone to Ken West, we've gone to Sweet Home for home games. Um, the last thing I'll say, maybe not the last thing, but hopefully the last thing. The, um, that, the turf field that's there now, it gets so much use, as you all know. I mean, there's, but there's like, their, their kids are crammed in, there's four or five football games, lacrosse games going on at the same time. There's never anyone on the grass field, because eight months out of the year, it's wet, it's soggy. And so I like the, the idea of, of putting the turf between West Moreland and, uh, and Kings Highway and giving kids another space to recreate, to congregate. When my wife and I moved into our house eighteen years ago, we didn't have kids, but we loved being in the neighborhood with a school, with fields, with games going on. Our kids are gonna be off to college, are gonna be out of the house in two, three, four years. But I look forward to, when that time comes, even though my kids aren't still playing sports, going over to the turf field, watching baseball, watching softball, watching soccer, just for the heck of it, because that's the neighborhood we live in. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm in support.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Can I have one more thing? I'm exceptionally-
You only get a minute and a half.
I'm exceptionally excited about the football courts. As will many people in this neighborhood. We go over and we make little chalk lines on the ones over there, that would be great, I'd like to do that. Thank you.
Well, and I, I will mention, just in relation to Dan's comment, you know, we try to utilize the current fields as much as possible. And I try to attend as many events that our kids are involved in outside of the school day as possible. And every time I go to a field hockey, soccer, you know, event at the current Dennis Ford Fields, I am inevitably approached by a parent saying, why aren't my kids playing on the turf? Why do they have to play over here in the mud? So I think that would, this would also help to, to solve that problem as well.
All right, well, Dan, I'm gonna close, oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, I, I'll be brief, I don't know if this thought will resonate with, with other folks, but I hear other people expressing reservations or at the interest in being involved in the planning. Um, and, and I, I sense a little consternation about having to vote on a thing, a significant thing, a significant amount of money, with there being so much, well, we'll figure it out. It almost feels like, well, we'll get the money, then we'll figure out how to spend it, which is, I know not what's going on at, to some degree. But it's a little, it's disconcerting to, um, you know, to, to not have a voice earlier in the process, so that when you get to the money part, you know, okay, we know where this is going, we know, we know to the extent we can exactly, you know, what's gonna be done here.
Yeah, and I, I think to clarify that, I wasn't saying we'll figure it out later. I think what I was saying is, the way that a capital improvement project is developed is, you know, the proposal that goes to the voters gives you a good indication of what the scope is going to be. But the finite details of how every piece of it's going to be designed, you know, comes after a successful vote. Because if the vote is unsuccessful, I don't think anyone sitting here would want us to pay Young and Wright and Turner, um, dollars to design a project that, that never comes to fruition, because that would be a waste of all the taxpayers' dollars. So we know that the broad scope is going to include playing fields. We know that the addition at Wyndhamir is gonna include four classrooms. We don't know exactly what those classrooms are going to look like, because we need to get our early childhood teachers into the cla, into the room. We need to get our principals in the room, our curriculum experts in the room to say, you know, how can we best use this space with our four-year-olds in a full-day program? So the scope that we have here, um, is, is relatively, um, um, consistent with what you'll see in the project. It's just the details, the orientation of the field, what does the sound booth in the auditorium look like? You know, what lighting are we gonna choose in the auditorium, you know, to best maximize our performances? What are the seats going to be? You know, and those are all done with user groups and with input from the stakeholders.
So you can, could this will be stakeholder input throughout the design process?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be nice, it'd be nice to have follow-up meetings, um, you know, I'm, I'm sure this is probably gonna pass in the budget, but have follow-up input from stakeholders about some of those details, because it sounds like a lot of people are interested in those sports fields. Um, you know, I'd be interested in knowing more about, you know, crunching the numbers to see if there would be, uh, a way to get money from the feds, the states, et cetera, that would, um, make it more, um, cost-effective to think long-term on things like heating and AC.
Now, you should stick around after this, because we have an update on competitive grants that we're gonna hear about, the money we have received for various things. So instead of running out when I end this hearing, stick around and hear more about the good things we are doing. Um, I will just tell you, just as a, a side note, the, the way this project, you know, we have to do a capital, uh, uh, building condition survey, it's a requirement by the state every five years. So I've been on the board, this is, you know, I'm- So I've been on the board, this is, you know, I'm in my fourteenth year, so I've been through a number of these building condition surveys. From there, we look at what the, what has to be done, and we get cost estimates. And from there, we break it down as to what do we really need to do? We kind of rank, we have, you know, a bunch of people help us rank things. So initially, Mr. Bevel and myself were part of this overall committee, but we had all the building principals, different directors, different people within the school, finding out, what do we need? Where are we? And things get ranked, and, you know, if we had to do all the needs we supposedly have, we're talking hundreds of millions of dollars. And we try to narrow that down to what do we really need to do, such as the boilers and stuff, where we've been kicking the can down the road probably for three or four projects now, and it's costing us a lot of money to get parts and things that in some cases don't even exist anymore.
Yeah, it's an inefficient system, so you're eating costs every year.
So, just leave you with that. So with that, I'm going to end the hearing, and I'm gonna call our regular meeting order. Thank you. This is one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. Tennis report, Mike Fielding.
Great. Well, I'm pleased to welcome Mike Delisle, Dr. Maria Otto, and Patrick Kapperman to give you an update on two competitive grants that we've been able to secure recently that will have a big impact on our school district. Welcome. Feel free to move the podium if you'd like.
We're flexible. We'll, we'll make sure we stay back from the crowd. Thank you for staying. You know, in all sincerity, we do have some exciting updates on previously exciting news relative to two competitive grants that we received this past year. We're gonna share a little bit more about this in a moment, but I, I get to present a bit on behalf, well, with two of our, two of our other phenomenal administrators, but also on behalf of some others who are here. Laura's spent a lot of time on this, Dr. Shannon has, Deb Bastoti has, Mr. Pennella has. So we'll go and look more detailed here momentarily, but we're gonna start off with a slide about hope. So I'm gonna, just a quick little story. So, you know, familiar with the movie Shawshank Redemption? You've seen the movie, right? So, love the movie. There is a part, I'm gonna share a little story within that movie. You may recall, Andy DeFrane's the main character, he was improperly imprisoned. While he was in prison, he fought to get a library in the prison, if you, if you might recall. And he was, he's kind of, he's kind of pushy about it, right? So he wrote a letter knowing there was a need within the prison for a library, for many reasons. In writing those letters, he was denied a number of times, maybe more than we were denied. So we were only denied one time, but we didn't give up, right? So the whole idea of, of hope is to keep, keep that enduring thought alive. And when we, when he, when he thought about the need in the prison, of course, he had many, many needs in mind. In our district, of course, we think about needs, as you saw in the capital project, we have needs around our community and our kids primarily, and at the forefront, right? And you're gonna, we're gonna talk a little bit about one around mental health, but that's a pretty sizable grant, but also one around record retention, which saves the mental health of maybe some, some others around here and maintains some records in a more current fashion. Again, much like, much like the capital project, we talked about upgrading and staying current with our times. So when we talk about hope, obviously, we talk about those important needs that we have in our community and our kids. And how do you get there? Through the outstanding efforts of who we have. This began a couple of years ago. We originally denied these, both of these grants, and we continued to submit, and à la Andy DeFrane, here we are again, both of them. So obviously, without an unbelievable team, you can't reach it, and of course, at the end, you're always keeping in mind meaningful outcomes. But in the end, the definition of, of that is, of hope is, is to never give up, right? You just don't give up. And we, we don't, and we wonk for our kids, and, and you can see the, the team at the bottom here are nineteen twenty-seven Yankees here, who've all contributed to it, and you see everyone here, and I've named them all, but we have an outstanding team that's put a lot of effort and time into this, all of whom are here, I know Lynn ran out, but outside of that, all of whom are here. She'll probably be back momentarily as well. But having said that, I'm gonna let two of our twenty-seven Yankees take over and start, start to share a little bit about the first grant, and I'll come in to talk about the record detention grant. So Dr. Otto?
I can be your Mickey. All right. Sounds good.
Your Mickey.
So I'm gonna just start giving kind of a broad overview of the mental health awareness training grant, and then Patrick's gonna go into some of the goals, so we'll kind of toggle off one another. But it is, as Mike mentioned, it's a competitive grant, this is a federal grant, so we're reporting, we have a GPO that's been assigned to us, we're reporting to that person, they're kind of giving instruction on some other things we need to be doing. It's through SAMSS, or the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. They have a number of grants, this is just one of many. They're a well-oiled machine, they have a lot of things that are required of us, and it's obviously also attached to U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. So this grant was open to domestic and private, not, not-for-profit entities, so there's actually some local, like, agencies that have also received the grant. But any of the applicants had to identify an experienced licensed mental health provider that could be a referral source. So as you all know, we have an ongoing collaboration with Gateway. We just actually initiated another collaboration with Horizon, and then Crisis Services is also part of our steering committee, and Mike will be going into some of that in more detail, but we satisfied the eligibility, which is why we pursued the grant. The purpose comes directly from the grant application, so just to kind of give you, like I said, broad strokes for what it's looking at, it does look at training, and it's looking at a broad scope for the training, so it's not just intended for schools, it's intended for the community. So we're looking to collaborate with the Amherst PD, the Amherst Youth Board, community agencies like Crisis Services, Suicide Prevention Coalition are all part of our committee. But the goal would be to help people to recognize and identify the signs and symptoms of mental health disorders, so that everyone can kind of be, you know, we've heard people say, say, see something, say something. It's the same with mental health, if you're seeing those risk factors, those warning signs, knowing what they are, knowing who you can report to, and who you can refer to, how you can get help. It also has to do with establishing those languages, so making sure that community-based mental health agencies are accessible to our students and to our staff, training all of our first responders. So we have, like I said, Amherst PD is connected, they're part of our partners, and they're gonna be part of the training. And then also educating families, community members, our staff, our students about resources that are available in the community. So as far as the funding, we were talking about the cost of the capital improvement, this is funding that we're gonna be getting, so we are eligible up to a hundred twenty-five thousand for up to five years. You can see the breakdown specific to Amherst in the bullets below. There were estimated a hundred thirty-four awards that went out nationally, so it's a great honor that we have received it. But with that comes, you know, some work, so we're trying to make sure that we know how to do it. But as it stays, cost sharing and matching is not required, although we are looking for how to make it sustainable, so that this is something that isn't reliant upon the grant once that funding ends. So I'm gonna go through just the first goal, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Patrick, and we'll talk a little bit about the timeline. But our, our goal, obviously, we're a school district, so our focus is on our students, but we're operating within the framework of Family Systems Theory, which looks at the student as kind of your centerpiece, so when you're looking at that diagram, the student as central, but then considering the student within a larger system or a larger framework. So first, considering them as part of their family, but then considering extended family, systems outside of that. So that's kind of the overarching framework that we'll be using. And in the timeline, I'll go through this briefly, but it just talks about Family Systems Theory is this year, so that would be our focus for this year. It gives a little bit of an explanation, but again, it's looking at human functioning in relation to those connections that you have with your family and the people outside of your family. Mike's gonna talk a little bit about the steering committee, but then the other piece, as you're gonna see, is that sustainable professional development, so we have a plan for how we build capacity over the years.
So just as we, we wanna recognize the team, folks that have contributed to the process, I think it's important to recognize the folks that are already contributing to our steering committee and will be for the next five years, four times a year, and continuing to enhance this work. It's attached to Goal One, but in all reality, it's really, it's gonna be attached to all the goals that you hear, though this is formally attached to Goal One, as Dr. Otto pointed out. I'll just note that you, you'll recognize some of our administrators and, and staff on the left, including Julianne Grof, our family support center liaison, but we have Kristi DiAngelo, who's the vice president at Gateway, Mary Diana Pauli, who many of you may know from the town of Amherst, Celia Spicone, who's the coordinator at Suicide Prevention Coalition of Erie County, who's an amazing resource, Jessica Piro, who's the CEO and president of Crisis Services, as well as being on the Suicide Prevention Coalition, Pastor Steve Bigner, who many of you know are involved, who's involved greatly with us, with our family support center, as well as our Tigers Dunn, Anna Sierra, who's a retired assistant superintendent, but she is involved in anything and everything under the sun. So she's on the Western New York PRC, which is the Prevention Resource Center, she's on the Suicide Prevention Coalition, and she does a lot of private work as well, is in this world of, of, of mental health. Christina Cle is the executive director at JFK, or After School and Before School Program, and there's reason for that, and we'll talk a little bit about what their involvement is, and APD, in this case, it's Lieutenant John Miller from Hampton Police. The other piece that is here, and I skipped over purposely, is the bottom left, with the Family Systems Theory training that really was going, is going to be starting this year, we had a trainer involved, and unfortunately, though he was really the be-all in this area, unfortunately, he passed away when we originally submitted, after we originally submitted this grant. And since getting this grant the second time around, we, we've been in the process of finding a trainer to, to get that work done for us. We've been in contact with Rutgers, as well as some other local folks as well. In fact, some of the folks here, as these, as these are all huge resources for us, as part of the steering committee, to be honest, many of these are, many people are great resources to us outside of that and our, and our regular jobs. But we're also looking locally, and Celia Spicone actually talked to me earlier today about some other options locally as well, for our Family Systems Theory training. So having said that, I know Patrick's gonna go over the rest of the goals. Yeah. All right, so Maria used the word framework, and really, the goals that we have here do have to do with establishing a conceptual framework, but then also really a, a framework of support within the community that has to do with building capacity with people, right? So our second goal there is increase the capacity of the Amherst community to identify signs and symptoms of mental disorders, including serious mental illness. How do you do that? We've got a really seemingly ambitious bullet point there, a hundred percent of school, staff, and participating community partners, some of which Mike already mentioned, able to do this, identify signs of mental illness and substance use disorders, and provide initial help. And that's through training with youth mental health first aid. And really, that's sort of a, to use a way Maria put it a little earlier today, see something, say something, sort of approach, right? Being able to identify things like anxiety and depression in youth, and then being able to support them in the moment and direct them towards more professional support. So again, framework, but also building capacity, and you're gonna see with the other two goals, it also has to do with building capacity within the school community and then the larger community. So increase the capacity of the Amherst community to safely support potential crisis situations for the use of research-based de-escalation strategies. TCIS is something that's been a part of the district for about seven or eight years now. Therapeutic crisis intervention for schools is something that's based out of Cornell. It is the crisis response model that we use in our schools for crisis de-escalation, but also prevention. So physical intervention is part of it, and I think that's often what people think of first, but really, it's much more comprehensive than that. It has to do with de-escalation strategies that really are also a part of good classroom management, and applicable in any situation where you have the potential for outbursts and crisis behavior. That applies in the larger community, it also applies in the home. So increasing capacity within the district is something we did a handful of years ago. We did what we called a tier-one TCIS training, where we gave a general overview to the whole faculty. We need to do that again, we need to refresh folks, we need to continue to train the entire training system to a training staff that's gonna be using it in a classroom, but we also wanna expand out in the community with training for families and for community partners, not in the physical intervention piece, but those de-escalation strategies, being able to manage crisis situations in the moment, and then also use those as learning opportunities. One of the other things I always liked, because we, we brought TCIS here some time ago to replace a program called Skip R, which is Strategies for Crisis Intervention and Prevention, and one of the big things that has also, is there is a therapeutic component within it on the backend whereby if a student is in a crisis mode, what, how do you manage it after as well, not just before, and during, but also after, that was woefully missing in some of the other products, which this brings to the table, ties in very nicely relative to the, the mental health component of the grant. Life Space Interview was what it's about.
Life Space Interview is sort of the, the crown piece of it, that where the learning comes in from a crisis situation. I know that that's something we'll, how in the community, when we do those trainings, but really, sometimes my wife will say to me, "Don't do that TCIS stuff." So it does have broad application.
It really works for a while.
All right, the fourth goal, again, that idea of building capacity in a framework that's not just conceptual, but really expanding support into the community. So strengthen and develop relationships and awareness. This ties back to that second goal, really all the goals, that idea of awareness, just thinking about something like youth mental health first aid, if people are going to direct people to resources, direct youth to resources, direct families to resources, they need to be aware of what those resources are and how to connect with them. So that's another training piece. The Family Support Center is a hub for connecting families within our district with resources that are out there, but it's also really a hub for training and presentation of information too. And it'll be utilized for exactly that purpose as part of the grant, to provide training in the pieces we've already discussed of the community, and then of course, it serves as a community liaison point. So I guess I was gonna summarize and say, really, all the goals, which actually, we wrote probably a year and a half ago, was as much an act of remembering as it was going back over and reviewing how we were gonna move forward when we found out that we got the grant, but it really is all about creating a framework of support in the school community and then the larger community. Support in the larger community, of course, benefits the school community in turn, right? So I think that, that's a good way to summarize everything.
And we're just gonna go through a bit of a timeline here to give you guys a sense. This is sort of, obviously, there's pages and pages of timeline, so it sort of give you a visual, and Maria's put this together to give you an outline of what, what you see to come.
So I just put together the highlights, and I think the key thing is, you're gonna see some intentional redundancy, so it is really all about capacity building, so we're gonna train our trainers, and then our trainers are gonna be training the community at large. So staff, students, family members, community members. So Year One, which they are operating on like October first through September of the following year calendar, so it doesn't really fall under a school calendar or a fiscal calendar, but that is how it is set up with the grant. So the, the first year is gonna focus on Family Systems Theory, which I already made kind of a brief summary about, and it also will focus on recertifying our persons that are trained currently as certified TCI people. So we already have a structure in place for that, so we're using some of those funds to kind of build that sustainable framework, and we're trying to have additional trainers, including community members, that would be trained just for kids, would be part of that, so making sure that, we're kind of making sure our scope is large. And then as far as referral mechanism, that's also talking about, one of the goals of the grant is you have to have one additional community, like partnership, so kind of finalizing that referral mechanism to make it seamless. Many of you probably are aware, it's hard to get referrals to mental health agencies, it's hard for people to get it quickly, readily, when they need it, so that's one of the goals of the grant. Year Two would focus more on youth mental health first aid, and again, same model, train the trainers, then turnkey it to the community at large. Youth mental health first aid, the focus is really adults, so it's training adults, what are the risks and warning signs of mental health disorders, so that adults know, oh, that might be a sign this child's behaviors are changing, I need to tell a trusted adult, I need to do a more handoff, so that the therapist can connect with that child in a professional relationship. Teen mental health first aid is another piece, and that, for our target audience, is actually our high school students, so it's ten through twelfth grade students, and it's the same mentality. The more people that know, you know, I used to do bullying for presentations, I always told kids, "You know more than adults know about where bullying is happening." So it's important that everyone knows what to look for, and everyone knows what to do. So the same is true here, we would get some of our staff trained in that teen mental health first aid, so that we could then deliver and have a sustainable model for years to come. Family Systems Theory would then be pushed out for our families, so we would use probably our Family Support Center to use that as a mechanism, because that's our current mechanism for offering some of those trainings, and community members would be part of it as well. And you're gonna see there's that recurring theme of TCIS throughout, because we want recertification and certification, and Cornell has an entire model that you have to follow, and Youth Mental Health First Aid does the same, so there's required pieces with regard to how the training has to be done, how often you have to do it, how, you know, how many people are trained. Those are all things that we would track with our data attendance, demographics, because we also wanna make sure disparate populations, like we know, for example, students that identify maybe as gay or bisexual, or, or students that potentially are of identify maybe as gay or bisexual are students that potentially are at more risk for mental health issues. So those are things that we'd be tracking as part of the grant as well. You'll see in Year Three, it's a continuation of Youth Mental Health First Aid, but now we're pushing it out to families. It's a continuation of Teen Mental Health First Aid, but now instead of training our trainers, we're pushing it out to our students, and then the TCI recert again. Year Four, now we're moving towards that annual training, we want it to be part of our fabric, so the Youth Mental Health First Aid would be happening for all of our staff annually, and we would also have our families being moved in on what some of that training looks like. TCIS would continue, and we would continue to focus on our community referrals, so that families know how to access those community agencies. And then for the final year, again, we still see that annual Youth Mental Health First Aid, TCIS for families, and this would be more of that de-escalation like Patrick shared, we're not like chaining parents in physical intervention, we are telling them how you can de-escalate students and prevent students from escalating. And then also, as Mike pointed out, crisis is actually a prime time for teaching, so when kids are de-escalated, it's a good time to be talking about, how could you have done something differently? What were your triggers? And we find that that's really effective, and that's what Mike was referencing with that Life Space Interview. But TCI recert is part of that, and then built into the framework of all of these years is the Mental Health Steering Committee. So what we didn't mention is Mike is the community liaison, so we have fancy titles now on top of our current titles. Mine is like project director, I don't think Patrick has one.
We'll give you one.
We'll make one up for him. But part of that is Mike is helping to kind of bridge with some of his connections, those community partners, but part of that is also the Mental Health Steering Committee. So we already had our first meeting this year, and we're supposed to have those four times annually, so we'll have three more once we have some of these things in place.
And for what it's worth, the grant funds a lot of this training, it funds one position. Ours is covered solely by our salaries, it's not an extra funding for us. But what it does do is it allows for a project coordinator, which we're currently in the process of hiring. In fact, we have a lead on one, it takes tonight, to make sure she gets interested. Couple of quick follow-ups. One is, we talked about capacity building. I think it's important to point out, even though those agencies and our steering committee's not here, it builds capacity for us, obviously selfishly, but it builds capacity for all those agencies too, because they're getting people trained, will then can turnkey folks. Town of Amherst, I think, plans on sending something up towards a 50 people to some of these trainings. JFK, obviously, in terms of crisis de-escalation, I mean, if you're running an after-school program, what about our training to manage to support kids in a safe and good environment? Amherst Police are involved greatly in some of these, as well as all the other groups you saw there. Their goal is also build capacity, so that they can continue into the future, and they just don't send a few people, and then when those people quit, it's gone.
Part of the application process is actually they send like a commitment letter, and so the commitment letter is what they're promising, so to speak, that they would do. So they might send three people for the Family Systems Training, and then they would promise to turnkey that to their staff for experience.
The only other thing that I would point out beyond that is we talked about TCIS also being involved in this district for some time now. I will also say Youth Mental Health First Aid has also been. So this last couple of years, we've done, in fact, this last particular year, we combined Youth Mental Health First Aid, Suicide Safety for Teachers, and then there are some components the state requires, there are 13 components that they require, and some training for staff as well. So our PPS staff did an amazing job putting together a robust training for all of our employees around that. But it's not the full entire Mental Health First Aid, which is where we will go with this. So I thought that would be helpful to point out as well, Mr. Penelope.
Yeah, I mean, I recall prior to COVID, we had gone down the road of Youth Mental Health First Aid. Unfortunately, in response to some losses we experienced as a school, community, and community, and then COVID, you know, sort of put the brakes on it, because we didn't have the ability to gather as a group, and our training opportunities were limited. So it came back again this year with our opening days and our ability to meet and train in person, and this will only expand it and allow it to continue to grow and become more part of the fabric of our community, but also the broader community within the town of Amherst.
Growing in the same direction is important. That's a really good point. So this is a spot to ask a question, actually, before we move on to the second grant, so...
So, all right, I think you answered, but so most of this funding goes through training?
Most of the funding goes through training, and then a project coordinator, ultimately building sustainability.
But is the, so is the project coordinator going to be an employee?
The project coordinator will be an employee, yes, because you'll see him on an upcoming board agenda, I just don't put the name yet. We're working on that, trying to find someone who's great at organizing, coordinating events, if you will, because that's a lot of the work. They don't need to be a mental health expert by any stretch of the imagination, they need to be able to coordinate, manage, communicate, set things up. Having that background, though, would be really nice.
But that's fully funded by the grant?
Fully funded, 100% fully funded.
It's written as like a 25 position right now, with the coordinator position, the rest of the funds are for purchasing the training, paying teachers like for summer, you know, so all of that is part of the sauce, so to speak.
And includes everything all the way down to fringe benefits, right?
Yep.
Or is this going to a special, like, fund then, that you're, you know, kind of like we do with the other government funds?
Yes, similar to all of our grants, goes in our special aid fund, our F Fund, and we have specific codes set up, not only for this grant, but for each year of the grant, so that we can track the spending, not only for the whole $500,000 grant, but by year.
Can you reapply for this again in five years' time? Is that your...
We get to reapply every year for a continuing application. I'm not sure, they have different grants, so, and even like, I guess their emphasis has changed. So when we first did this, I don't think there was as much of an emphasis on disparate groups, but now, like I just told Mike, they just changed like the disparity report, so I got it ready, and then they were like, "It's both pages now." So it's more of an emphasis on that, so I imagine there's probably a similar grant that you could reapply for, but you actually have to apply every year to have the funds continue.
And a lot of you would be monitoring and adjusting as you go, right? See what benefits there are, see what, showing impacts there, and then what do we want to do moving forward? I would be curious to see where things land in five years, and our hope is, and our plan is to have a positive impact, as Mr. Penelope pointed out, not just on our schools, but also our community. So no matter where kids are, or where families are, we're all growing in the same direction and saying similar things, because we know it helps kids. But in five years, I'll be curious to see.
Because it's a competitive grant, like I think you were asking about the funding, like there's a whole different system for like pulling down the funds, there's different systems for entering the data, so just because it's related to the federal government, it's just very different than like IDR, or some of the grants that aren't competitive.
A lot different, a lot more paperwork.
So that's a wonderful competitive grant, over $500,000 that we've been able to secure for our school district.
You have another question?
Oh, yeah.
So, so the referral mechanism, so that, that just means if we have a referral to an agency, then, I mean, are we using these funds to get, you know, some better access or anything, or...
So one of the, one of the things that the grant, one of our goals, is to have another community partner. So right now, we have Gateway, we actually already accomplished this, so we can check that one off, because we actually established a partnership with Horizon. So it doesn't cost us anything, they're using our space, so it improves the access for our students. So right now, Horizon and Gateway are in all of our buildings, so all of our students have access to them as a professional, you know, mental health provider, and our social workers currently are kind of the liaison for that. So when a social worker is making a referral, like, one of the many obstacles that you can reach is if a parent doesn't have transportation, or a parent, you know, if there's going to be an obstacle, we want to move those. So we're trying to break down those barriers, so if they're in the school, they can access them during hours and after, also after-school hours, we have them in the buildings. So we've already done that, but the referral mechanism is to do just what you're saying, to try to make it more easily, readily available to all of our students and families.
I know when I was on the U.S. Board, that we used to fund those agencies, and then at the end of the year, they'd be accountable to us for how many Amherst kids that they served. So I mean, Mary, Diana, you know, be aware of that, so I don't, you know, I don't know if that's something that's, you know, there's...
And those are all things we're going to work with, that's exactly why we have those folks on the steering committee in part, people like Mary Diana, but also the agencies that are reflected there to help.
And making sure it's something that can be sustained over time, so like, if this grant money goes away, how do you make sure you can continue to do that? Like, I know, I'm aware of districts that have used some of like their COVID dollars to fund like private therapists. The problem is like, that money goes away, and like, how do you maintain it? So like, it solves the problem now, but as we all know, like, mental health is here for everybody, like, we all are at some level requiring health support, whether it's low level or high level.
To that end, though, right, we should be establishing deeper, stronger relationships with those community partners, not just the ones that we currently have, but again, the idea is to connect with more over the life of the grants. So hopefully, that helps perpetuate the support as well. And I think, yeah, that's a good question, five years from now, sustainability is a big goal of this, right? But what happens after that in terms of paying for training, some of it will have momentum, but otherwise, there is going to be some upkeep, but it will be interesting where it lands and how we handle that and moving forward. But it's a great vehicle to build capacity right now.
And a lot of the people on the steering committee have been in the business for a really long time, like Celia Spicone, she was like, I want to say Director of Psychiatry at like, one of the hospitals, so like, they have tons of connections, like, and they're way more knowledgeable in some of those circles than we would be, you know, as mental health providers within the school. So they, even in our last meeting, like, we were like reading all kinds of notes, because they just had so many ideas for just what you're saying. Like, there might be things that we weren't thinking of, because we're just not in those circles.
And texting afterwards. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, good. Well, that's great.
So, yeah, we, on a similarly exciting note, while we've also obtained a record retention grant, which will allow us to more, wonderfully retain our record.
I will need a motion for new business items.
Uh-oh. I am going to make a motion to approve new business items, F1, A through J, 2, B, C, D and E, 3, A through H.
All right. We have a second.
Okay.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving new business items, F1, A through J, 2, B through E, and 3, A through H, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries 5-0. Ms. Custody, do we have any follow-up action items?
I do now.
All right. We will need a motion to convene to executive session.
We need a motion to convene to executive session for matters regarding employment and a particular person and litigation.
We have a second. Ms. Revo, all in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries 5-0.